Kelly, you're muted.
Great, thank you.
I saw your lips moving.
Thank you, sorry, I was just trying to get the YouTube set up, so now we are live on YouTube and we have everyone here. So, thank you for joining us. Why don't we, we'll just start. I'm still?
Great, thank you.
I saw your lips moving.
I'm sorry, you know, I was hearing myself echoing, I apologize, so we'll start this again, thank you everyone for joining us. If you can just give me one more second, I also want to make sure we record, we'll record this meeting, so we have it to share with others later. Here we go, again, thank you everyone. So, we can start, I'm hoping everybody can see the screen that is showing the login, and as we do with all of our meetings, well, let me just, I apologize, we're gonna start by our statement. The Olbridge Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this land states.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Start, you gotta read the board president one.
There were paragraphs above that, Ms. Alice Foster.
Oh, sorry, just.
Sorry about that.
That's alright, no, thank you, sorry, I did go down to that one, okay, so, why don't we try this one again, thanks everyone. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news Tribune, the Esberry Park Press, the board office, the schools, and on cable Cable Vision Channel 118 and BIOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 30th, 2020. The board will meet to discuss and officially act upon the road back, restart and recovery plan to the Olbridge Township Board of Education for the schools to open in September 2020. Mr. Mara, you can take over the next one, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alice Foster. The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call please.
Burns?
Here, here.
Callie?
Here.
DeCaro?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Present.
Giordano?
Here.
Lent?
Here.
Solakowski? Alice Foster?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Okay, so, if we can if we can all stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera. Alright, thank you everyone. Before we kick off the meeting, I am going to turn the meeting over, I believe, to Dr. Hoker. I know many of you hopefully attended the forum on Tuesday. I know a lot of information was giving out, given out, and there is also a lot of information, a lot of questions, and a lot of still open items, so we wanted to kick off by sharing, doing a quick debrief, sharing a little bit more, and then also hopefully presenting a little bit more information to help you know, after, after Tuesday, so, alright, Dr. Hoker, we can see this, so if you wanna just start?
And I am running the presentation, but I am going to turn it directly over to Mr. Sedino.
Thank you very much. I do wanna say, I know it wasn't in the, because this is a special meeting, that if we can keep the Armentian family in our thoughts and prayers, Zachary was a graduate, I think, of Olbridge High School class of 2014, and he lost his life I believe overnight, so, I know Joanne's with us, she can at least put that in our on our agenda for August, and keep the family with us in our thoughts and prayers at this time. So, tonight's presentation is a little bit, is gonna be a little bit different than the one we had on Tuesday. The focus of this is going to be on basically the structure of the plan. I believe that the board and is comfortable with the safety measures put in place as far as cleaning, masks, screening of staff and students. Those consistently seem to be a, an area in which we have, for the most part, at least a level of agreement on. Going forward with the path, and we look at the next slide, our road back. You know, these are uncharted waters, everyone hears that phrase to nauseam every day, and no matter what you're talking about, whether you're talking about politics, sports, everything, as we talk about COVID-19, these definitely are uncharted times, and there's no rulebook, there's no guidebook, and even as of today, as I've said in the past, this plan that I'm presenting to you has no checklist from the state. It was presented for an hour, then retracted. And we expect there still may be changes, I'm hearing rumblings out of Department of Education that our whole conversation tonight may be a moot point by tomorrow. Or, or sometime soon after that, apparently the governor's going to make another discussion, decision about education as soon as possibly tomorrow. And that's the, the challenges that we've all faced throughout the course of this, when we found out nearly a month ago that we had to come up with this plan. The procedures within the plan and what we had to plan for continually have changed, and they continue to, they continue to change. But what has not changed for, for me, or for anyone, I'd hope in this public, is that the emphasis must not be on education first, but emphasis has to be on health and the safety of our students and staff and community first. We, we all know that our students learn best in schools. We all know that having our education system in place where our teachers can be there guiding our students in person is not replaceable through any model, through remote education, a hybrid education. But we also know that the guidelines that are given to us are strict, and the CDC guidelines must be followed. We, we've had a team approach to our committee, that was, our task force was made up of everyone from education, community, parents, and food services, custodial staff, maintenance staff, everyone who's involved in carrying out this, whatever plan we develop. I have to also include obviously our nursing staff and medical staff as part of that, and when we looked at it, there was 100% consensus that we would follow, and by no choice that we'd have to follow the CDC guidelines. And that would include us to have six feet of difference, six feet of distance of students when they are in school and on buses. So, in doing that, it necessitated a hybrid model as the only model that would work if we're bringing students into school. Dr. Hoker, please bring us to the next slide. So, when we looked at several models and I, you know, everyone has said or heard, this is a, a model that was presented that was cautious. And to some point, I thought maybe, maybe the public would be, think it was too cautious. But I was amazed by the commitment by the task force of everyone on there almost, that this was the plan, including the parents, that best fit their needs and belief in how we proceed forward. We're all about to cross a bridge. A bridge has never been crossed before. No one has done it in this United States. No one has, can say, this is the, this is the experience we have on bringing students back during a live COVID event. And make no mistake, this is a live COVID event. And for me, when we're crossing a bridge, and I'm not so sure of that structure, I'm gonna put the least amount of stress on that bridge at first. And that's what this plan allows us to do, it allows us to test the bridge so that we can see what is going to happen. How much stress can a community of 8,500 learners and 1,500 staff entering into schools support before we have an outbreak that could have a devastating impact on our community? Now, I do not envy the decisions that we've had to make, educators have to make, families have had to make, and this board's gonna have to make tonight. Because you're gonna have to make a decision on whether we tread lightly and take a first step that doesn't overstress the system. Or we put more stress on a, on a, on a bridge that we're not sure it could support. The, the plan that we have in place does minimize and contain the risk of COVID cases. Because we have three cohorts, if there's an outbreak, we can minimalize the impact of having two cohorts that are not involved. It allows us, because we have less numbers in, to thoroughly screen our students as they're coming in. It allows us to clean our schools before introducing no new cohorts. This model provides live instruction every other day. Whereas if you had an double A day and a day off and double B day, the other cohort would be without that live instruction for two days. It can be easily scaled up. If we enter this bridge, and it's strong, and it can support us, and we do not see a, and, and an outbreak, we can easily increase it and bring more students in and increase the cohorts. It allows for learning and feeling comfortable in a school environment that's new to these students, it's gonna be a new normal for them to come in, see their peers wearing masks, to see their teachers wearing masks, to identify these issues and allow our counselors to support them as they come in, during what is going to be a very difficult time. Dr. Hoker? So, to review what our, our teams were, we had two teams running simultaneously, two task force teams. One was the reentry task force team, and one was the remote learning task force team. The remote team met today. And some of the materials you're gonna see, what was not presented last Tuesday, are materials from there, where we provide you with the structure and the framework as of what a school day will look under, look like, under this hybrid model, and what the other cohorts would be doing. The process we used, we took survey information, team feedback. We had people on the teams, like again, like I said, at least with the remote learning team, who were parents, educators, educators who are parents, staff members, educators, administrators within the schools. Dr. Hoker? I'm now gonna have Dr. Tuwee walk us through the proposed plan, and then we'll, I'll wrap it up towards the end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sedino. So, our proposed plan surrounded, was based on four very specific goals. The first is maintaining the health and safety of students, staff, and the community, maximizing individualized learning opportunities, supporting teachers and staff, appropriate professional resources to maximize students' learning and interaction, and establishing a sound operational and financial foundation for the district for the 2020-2021 school year. Everything that you'll see moving forward was based on those four goals, which were established early on within the course of the process for not only developing the plan back, but also the, the remote component to the plan. Because with any plan, specifically the hybrid plan, you're gonna have in-person and remote components as well. So, those four, the three guiding principles for the hybrid model align with the four goals that were previously mentioned. We wanted to make sure that the hybrid model was both scalable to allow for additional students to be brought into the buildings very quickly, if, if possible, and based on the health standards and the progress of the Olbridge community, and also provide full-time remote learning option as outlined by the New Jersey governor. That was done last Friday on the 24th, and again, obviously pending his announcement tomorrow. All this could change, but these were the three areas that we focused on specifically when looking at our hybrid model. So, what does the hybrid model look like? The hybrid model right now is a 33% plan. That 33% plan calls for three different cohorts, A, B, and C at a 33% capacity. Students would attend school one day per week, A cohort in many days on a regular school week without any holidays would be coming in on Monday, B on Wednesday, C on Friday, with Tuesday and Thursday acting as full remote days. Those four remote, remote days allow for a full cleansing of all the buildings in between the respective cohorts, as mentioned by Mr. Sedino. And additionally, allows for the students to still maintain a healthy and strong academic environment for the, the school year, for the 2020-2021 school year. Additionally, all in-person days would be half-day schedules, and we're gonna get into the rationale for that in a couple minutes. As Tuesdays and Thursdays have been previously mentioned, they will be remote days, and to the best of our ability, students will be paired with their siblings in the same cohort to the greatest extent possible. So, what does a calendar look like as a visual, to give you an idea of what was planned, and again, this is for the full year. Ideally, we don't wanna use this for the full year, but if that's what does come about, that's, that's what we are planning for. And part of this is to ensure that there's equity within the respective three cohorts, cohort A, B, and C. So, here's an example of the sample calendar for the 2020-21 school year. The district would start off with three professional development days. We anticipate moving the November 3rd election professional development day with approval to Thursday, September 2020, Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, which would give three professional development days at the beginning of the school year. Part of the rationale for this is, in, in March, unfortunately, many of our, our teachers literally had to drop what they were doing, left the classroom on a Thursday, and some of them weren't able to get back in. We wanna make sure that not only the classroom setup for a healthy environment for the students once they enter the building, but the teachers are able to properly prepare and have a very clear and prepared message for those students when they enter the building. And then if you look at the three cohorts, cohort A is labeled in green, cohort B on Wednesdays is purple, and cohort C would be orange on Fridays. The yellow days are virtual learning days, and again, this schedule mirrors as best possible what we anticipate for the 2020-21 school year if we were to go for the entire year as a, a hybrid model. If you see below, the amount of days for each cohort is almost exact, there are 35 in-person days for group A or cohort A, 36 for cohort B, and 36 for cohort C. Obviously, this doesn't, this will include a midterm or a final schedule, but we are looking to maintain the high academic standards of all three levels, high school, middle school, and elementary, as we progress forward. There are approximately 74 district-wide virtual days. This schedule also allows us to work in some of our potential snow days, if we did have a snow day, and it was on a day that it was in person. Ideally, with this schedule, we could move that to a virtual day, and possibly look at rescheduling an in-person day for that group that missed. So, this schedule does provide us with flexibility, it takes into account a equity factor for all three groups, and ensures that on the virtual days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, there will be a comprehensive schedule for the students. So, what are the advantages of the program? The 33% allows, again, as, as Mr. Sedino stated, a smaller classroom environment, which allows for in-person learning in a safe and secure area, so, just to run through some numbers, if you're looking at a 24-student class from any of the elementary schools, approximately eight students would be attending on any given day. In middle school, if you're looking at 25 or 27 students in a given middle school class, you're looking between eight and nine students a day, and at the high school, where some of the classes are upwards of 30 students, especially those core classes, English 1, algebra, some of the core social studies and science classes. If they're at 30, then you'd be having approximately 10 students in the class. Ideally, as we continue to, to look at our facilities, and hopefully have a excellent reaction to the 33% plan, as students not only wear masks and staff wear masks, but we can not only prove that this is a very valid option for students, and then hopefully, very quickly, up the number of students in our, our physically come in day-to-day basis, because this is a very scalable program, going from 33% to 66% in a relatively easy method. This plan does allow for reduced numbers of students in the building, it allows for a reduced number of staff within the building, allows for maximizing cleaning and sanitizing during the course of the day. And overall, we, we thought that the 33% was not only a a sustainable plan, which is very important, but it was a safe plan for the return of our, our teaching staff and our students to ensure that they would be able to continue to maintain their healthy activities during the course of the school year. Then, just for the half-day, it does provide a tolerable amount of time for students to wear masks. It allows for additional teacher preparation time, and you'll see sort of the model schedules, and again, I just would like to highlight that this is all subject to board approval, this is all tentative, and this is all subject to change, but we are presenting the model as, as best we can tonight. There will be no in-person lunches for students, as, as outlined in the CDC, and still in New Jersey, there's no indoor dining allowed in New Jersey, and at this point, there would be no in-person lunches, it would be a grab-and-go lunch for the entire district, for students who are on free reduced lunch or purchasing lunch through school. And it also provides the ability to concentrate on specific areas, English reading, math, as well as some of the core areas in English and, excuse me, in elementary and middle school. In the high school, as you'll see in a minute, there will still be eight classes that the students will be scheduled for, and that that dynamic of the higher-level college courses, the CTE courses, that would be multiple grade levels, multiple grade levels, as well as multiple classes, would still be intact for the comprehensive high school that Olbridge High School is. This would be a sample schedule, again, on Monday, cohort A would be in, in session, there would be a remote for Tuesday through Friday. A cohort B would be in Wednesday, cohort C would be on Fri, on Friday. And then the full remote cohort, which is something that we are examining very closely as we finalize our full remote program. One of the prerequisites for the, the development of the full remote program is ensuring that the hybrid program not only was board-approved, but also was able to support the needs of the students that we would be seeing, obviously with the survey that's coming out, if you haven't filled it out already, if you could please do so, that would be very helpful. The full remote survey does, is, does not bind anyone to a full remote, you're not signing into and agreeing to that, that would be at a later date. But it does provide the district with a baseline from which to work, to see how many parents would elect to have their students in a full remote setting, and potentially create a cohort D, which would be full remote, and potentially change some of the planning components that we have going into the school year. Teachers and staff would be available in person on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and would be remote on Tuesday and Thursday. So, this is a, a very, very cursory high school schedule, and I just, I have to give kudos to Dr. Sasso, Mr. Dolan, and Ms. Fazio for helping to facilitate the construct of this, of this calendar and this schedule. You know, that, we have a top-notch administrative staff at the high school, and they really showed an excellent, they did an excellent job helping to facilitate the conversation and also develop the schedule as a whole. One of the, the, the anchors to the discussion was that we wanted to make sure that the students had, continued to have their choice and full scope and scale of the programs that we offer, the excellent programs we offer at the high school. For example, you know, we, we look through junior and senior schedules where we have seniors who are taking, you know, English and phys ed, as well as a triple period of cosmetology, as, and personal finance, and some of the other core classes that they need, not only to graduate, but some of the areas that they are very focused on, accounting, business, we have a very robust CTE, accounting, industrial arts program, and we're very proud of that. So, I wanna make sure the students still have access to those programs throughout the year. So, in the Olbridge High School and EMGNC schedule, the schedule's divided into two distinct weeks, and again, there's a week one and a week two. And we'll see this, and you'll get updates on a week-to-week basis on what week it would be if you were a respective high school student and high school parent. In the first week, the students would have their first four periods, now, obviously, this is simplified for purposes of the presentation, but for high school students, you know that it's a, not a 1 through 8 schedule, it's a 1 through 12 schedule with a 4, 5, a 5, 6, a 6, 7, a 7, 8, 8, 9, all the way through to the, the 9, 10 period, and the very the, and all the way through to 11 and 12, so, this is just a clarification that there are eight periods, and there will remain eight periods in the day for the high school sta, high school students. So, on the first week, and again, these are weeks that would be dictated, not with a holiday. They would be predetermined, so, it would be sent out on a Sunday, okay, this is a week one activity or a week two activity. So, the students are well-aware of what classes they, they will have in person versus the classes that they will have virtually in a given week, so in, on a Monday of a regular week, cohort A would come in, and they would have four periods, they would be an hour long, they would go through their first four periods, whether it's English, math, science, social studies, or any of the core electives. They would be one hour long, it'd be approximately a three-minute passing cycle, they would get, finish up their, their day at approximately 11:44. At that point, the teachers would have their lunch, and at the end of the day, the teaching staff would cycle through a remote learning schedule with classes 1 through 4 for the cohorts, not only who are not in, in that given day, so for example, cohort A is in person, cohort B and C are not, and therefore, the teachers would be available at the end of the day for approximately 25 minutes, recycled through their classes, through a, a remote learning platform, and address any questions or concerns that were from cohort B or cohort C. Additionally, cohort A is included in there, for students who might struggle with math, or might struggle with an English concept, didn't catch didn't catch that note in social studies or science. It allows for the students to log back in and see their teacher for an additional twenty-five minutes if they if they deem necessary. So all the cohorts would have access to the teachers in the afternoon. And then on the subsequent Tuesday, which is a virtual day for the entire district, all of the high school students would cycle through their five-through-eight periods. So again, the numbers are not exact as they would be in your schedule, but your last four periods of the day would be remote and they would be approximately one hour with a ten-minute window in between. At the beginning of the day, because of our, again, Dr. Sasso, Ms. Fazio, and the high school administrative staff, not only promote a very inclusive environment at the high school, but one where student activities are is a heavy focus, in part because we want to make sure that students are not only academically challenged within the high school, but they're also challenged socially and to ensure that they're going to expand outside their their norm and involve themselves in other different activities. To that effect, you know, the high school has a plethora of clubs and activities. They have a robust peer program and we want we want to make sure that there were still opportunities for students during the course of the school day to meet in these clubs, at least virtually, on a remote basis and allow for the teachers to ensure that they too have time during the day to participate in these clubs and activities, which are so very vital to the the goings-on at the high school. So the first part of the the first hour and twenty-five minutes, again, within the contracted teacher day, would be associated with student activities on those on those remote days, Tuesday and Thursday. And then the students would begin to cycle through their classes approximately nine o'clock for one hour. The students would, it's an attendance-based class, so the students would be expected. It's not a optional academic activity. They are to check in and attend the class from nine to ten, ten-ten to ten, eleven-ten, ten, eleven-twenty to twelve-twenty. They would have lunch from twelve-twenty to one o'clock and then one hour for period eight at the end of the day. Teachers would also be available during that time and would be providing direct remote instruction during the course of those periods on Tuesdays and Thursdays. For week two, it flips. So that first week cohort A, cohort A, cohort B, and cohort C are all doing periods one through four in person and five through eight remotely. On the second week, the second rotation, the periods flip. So period five through eight would then turn to the in-person side. They would have their sixty-minute periods and period one through four would transition to the remote. And we would rotate the weeks accordingly to ensure that not only is that the most equitable way to have students access their respective courses, but it ensures that the teachers have every opportunity to teach both in-person their classes and also remotely and to ensure equal access to the educational platforms that our students need at the high school. Please keep in mind that all plans are subject to Board of Education approval. All plans are tentative and all plans are subject to change. A sample middle school schedule is listed here. And again, we are in a similar scenario with the middle school, although there's slight differences. As we get lower into the respective grade levels, the focus on the educational component is based a little bit more into the core areas. So for the sample middle school schedule, this would be at Saul and Sandberg Middle School. There would be five in-person classes. Those five in-person classes would start at eight o'clock and end at approximately twelve-ten, when dismissal would be a grab-and-go lunch. Teachers would have a fifty-minute lunch from twelve-twenty-five to one-fifteen. And again, the teachers would cycle through for approximately twenty minutes with the cohorts that are not physically in school on that day in the respective classes. The five classes that would be provided during this time would include math, science, social studies, and English, and also physical education. Related arts, as well as world language, would be done primarily online. It will be provided on the Tuesdays and Thursdays, as well as during times when the opposing cohorts are not in school. So for example, if cohort A is in school on Monday, they have their five periods. During those five periods, again, math, science, social studies, and English and phys ed, the cohorts B and C would be available for the world language and the related arts components. And that would be scheduled through the administration at the middle school to ensure equal access to the, you know, the comprehensive world language program we have in middle school and also the extensive related arts that are also available. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, the students would have approximately six periods. Those six periods would start and the students would have to attend. It is a mandatory attendance policy at nine-thirty. There would be approximately forty-five minutes of classes and they would, and again, the times are subject to change. We are still continuing to hammer out every single detail and we are looking for, continue to hear both parents, staff, and in some cases, student feedback about the schedule. But the way that the schedule is currently constructed, you would have six periods a day on average for about forty-five minutes. Those forty-five minutes, again, would include math, science, social studies, and English, as well as world language. There's a period built in there for teachers to participate in meetings. We have RTI meetings, IEP meetings, administrative professional development. And at the beginning of the day from eight o'clock until nine-thirty, for the middle schools, the teachers would receive both their prep time and the students would be encouraged to participate in their PE time to begin the day. On Wednesday and Friday, cohort B and cohort C would be on a similar schedule. So on any given day in the middle school, there would be a the ability of the students to have direct remote instruction, as well as the distribution of remote instruction materials to the respective cohorts that were not in school on that day. And the sample elementary schedule, and this is for all weeks. Again, the high school is the only one that's going to have rotating weeks in part because we had to include those high-level electives, AP courses, and extensive CTE courses that that were in the student's schedule. Again, as we get down to elementary, we're looking at really core academic areas. Right now, you're, and again, these these schedules are subject to change. They might be different based on the building, the teacher availability. They could potentially be different based on when the related arts teachers are available. And they can adjust. You might necessarily have math first thing in the morning or English first thing in the morning, but you might have math followed up by science and then having your various other components to the day. But to provide a general overview, elementary students for an in-person day would receive approximately ninety minutes of of ELA instruction, thirty minutes of either science and social studies. So science and social studies would be provided in alternating weeks. Seventy minutes of math, thirty minutes of related art, which would be provided for this teacher preparation time and would be, the related arts would be most likely push-in activities where the related art teachers would push into the classroom. The teachers, the students really wouldn't be leaving the class in those particular instances for those classes. The teacher would have approximately a fifty-minute lunch and then we would have the ability of teacher at the end of the day to have approximately one hour, an hour and five minutes. Might be a little less than that, give or take, based on the the amount of prep time allotted in the OBEA contract. But there would be about an hour at the end of the day where teachers could not only prepare, but also push out activity, we're currently looking at all parts, components of the student body. So for students who have IEPs or who are ELL students, it is potential that they would be in more days during the course of the week. That determination would be based on the student's program, as well as goals and objectives as outlined in the student needs of every single student. The sixty-nine hundred students who are currently listed as general education and the fifteen hundred students who are currently receiving general education-related services are met on a day-to-day basis across all grade levels. So that would be an in-person day. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, it would be full remote for elementary. And one of the feedback, one of the major elements and feedback that we received from parents is that they really were looking for live remote instruction. It was a struggle for a lot of parents, specifically when materials were pushed out or there was potentially a some sort of video shared that provided an instructional strategy, not only to help the students concentrate when they're sitting and working at the computer, but also some students just don't work well with the computer, period. You know, especially, we heard that from our K through two parents, that they want materials. And those materials can be provided as part of the in-person cohort, which is a reason why this hybrid program, you know, I firmly believe works for all parties. So if a student is not working well on those remote days and they're looking for supplementary materials, whether it's handouts, whether it's additional reading materials or RTI activities that could boost a student's comprehension or phonemic awareness exercises. All of those components can be provided through handouts, through hard copy materials on an in-person day and then carried over on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which again, we think is important. But at the same time, the the social and emotional relationship that a student has with their teacher, again, to Mr. Dino's point earlier, can't can't be overemphasized. And we really want to make sure that there are scheduled times during those two remote days where the whole class and potentially cohort, the various cohorts A, B, and C can meet individually with their, as a group, not individually, but as a group, small group instruction with their classroom teacher to ensure that there is still that connection on those virtual days to provide the students with that connection with their teacher, which is so very important. So these, again, these times are are subject to change and are based on the individual teacher courses. As as previously mentioned, all plans are subject to Board of Education. All plans are tentative and all plans are subject to change. That being said, we are looking to actively schedule remote learning times for our students on the elementary level based on the feedback and what we learned over the course of the last three months of of last school year. That being said, the teachers still need time to prepare, participate in in activities, professional development, and also other related activities. We are looking to provide related services on on for a full day. On Tuesday and Thursday, one of the things that we received in terms of parent feedback was a, you know, a ten-to-two model didn't really facilitate a full related arts schedule for their students. And we're working to ensure that all IEPs are met and implemented to the greatest extent possible. This schedule does provide us with a little bit more leeway because of the length of time. Students will be, students will be expected to be in some level available for the contractual day of the teachers. And obviously, the teachers would be a necessity and will have to report on their contractual times for each of the three respective grade levels.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Chewie. So to summarize some of all that chart that we saw, we just kind of walk you. What does a potential day look like for a student? We'll use elementary students here as an example. Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, when they're in school with their cohort, they would have a schedule of instruction that would include language arts, math, science, related arts. They would have a focus on these core areas throughout the course of the day. Time would be individualized for assessment, progress, working to identify gaps with the students, working with some of their their gaps and their needs based upon their learning goals or their IEPs, the social-emotional check-in, special services would be taken in during during that time. And that would all take place from the the nine-ten to the one-fifteen mark. There'd be lunch for both students and and staff. And in the latter part of the afternoon, we would see that the teachers push out instruction for the next day, respond to parent emails, follow up with students who have concerns or questions about the earlier part of the day's instruction. Students also have the option to log in to continue working at the time. For those students who are on a hunt, on a hybrid day, they'll, they'll, students will check in to do their work. They'll review the posted work that was assigned to them by the teacher the night before, complete assignments, review some of the work that we have going on right now. We have teachers assigned to creating online lessons with video lessons that are pertinent to the first ten weeks of school. And those will be available to offer rich content. Some of the content will also provide multiple ways. They'll have their worksheets, online resources, recorded videos, and the workbooks as well. In the afternoon, again, they'll get time, additional time for instruction and and small group help from their teachers. They're prepping for students for the next day. The teachers can provide parent support, professional growth, and collaboration planning. For those students, now, there's two options here. I'm just going to kind of walk you through. The students are a hundred percent remote. So as we have the survey going out and we're looking at our 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 numbers of people or our families that are looking for that one-hundred percent remote model. And you have to keep in mind that it's not even a week old in which we're told that this is an option. As of last Wednesday, I was on a call with the Department of Education and they said in no way, no how could a student choose a hundred percent option for remote unless that unless they had a predetermined medical diagnosis in which they they would need that. And we were told not to put it in our plans and not to plan for it because it wouldn't be accepted. Two days later, we were told to have to be in there, so we're about a week away from that. So we still have to have some options in here as far as how many students are going to opt for that hundred percent remote. And that will be contingent on how we impact our staffing. So I have two options here depending on where this where this all falls with the number of hundred percent remote people or students that are out there. So in option one, they would, if the number of looking for a hundred percent remote is a low number, they'd be integrated with an existing cohort on that day and they'd follow a similar similar schedule as the cohort. And in the afternoon, it would just be the same as a hybrid day. In option two, that's kind of then they become a a D cohort. And their days would look similar to the Tuesday, Thursday days that every other student has. It would most likely be an assigned staff member who was who was assigned to just remote students from across the district. So it may be one or two first grades of just remote, but the students would be coming to us from everywhere, from Voorhees on one side of town to Memorial on the other side of town. So we're looking at the day of the life of students on Tuesdays and Thursdays. These are the full remote days. There'd be live, live instruction with the teacher. The date would most likely start with a morning meeting with all students. They'd get that socialization lot, again, live, but through our learning platform. This could be their whole class. And then the teacher has the options there to break them out by cohorts, leveled reading, whatever groups that they want to be put them in, but again, live remote instruction. And they'd have lunch. And then in the afternoon, again, some of those additional supports for students in small groups, prepping for the next day, parent support, feedback, professional growth, collaboration, planning. For those on a hundred percent remote, it's going to be the similar as we've talked about before. On this day, it'd be the same schedule as a a remote day. And for those who, again, on full remote, it would be the same as a regular Tuesday or Thursday. These are, their their day would really not much change much differently on Tuesdays and Thursdays because they're both fully remote days. Dr. Chewie, these are your slide. You want to take this one back on available options to families?
Sure. And again, this is just a summary of of what we're looking for district-wide as we move forward. Again, this is all subject to change based on the governor's vision as we move forward through the summer. But again, the hybrid model, as was described, would have live check-ins with the teachers. There'd be teacher-recorded videos, teacher-led small remote group sessions, online self-directed learning, and special services as provided by the students' IEP, RTI plan or ELL plan. If there was a hundred percent remote, as Mr. Sedino has as just explained, that the what that would look like tentatively based on the number of students who are going to, none of the number of parents, number of students who are going to potentially opt for a hundred percent remote. That remote option would still have many of these same five components that would be available to the students who are who are in person.
Okay, so now we're looking at the next step. So we have a great amount that we must do. We're going to take the data that we have from our cohorts and from our surveys. We're going to create necessary checklist that teachers must do so we have normalcy of what our expectations are for the beginning of this the school year. We're going to create common resources for grade-level teachers to use. Right now, that's being done. We have staff in place making a very rich library of videos that they can call upon and use to deliver real instruction that supports the students' needs. We'll establish a schedule for two district-wide all-virtual days. That was was kind of rolled out to you here today. Finalize all virtual options for families requesting that option and how that staffing fits into that part. Review district courses, determine what courses are best aligned to having in-person learning or what courses will be strictly online. And that kind of really lends itself to the high school conversation because obviously, there's certain courses that can't be done in a in a CDC world that would be done in person, like such, you know, cooking, you know, we're not going to have students cooking in a in a classroom, sharing utensils and so forth. When you can't have in 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 establishment dining, we certainly can't have groups of students coming in and cooking in the school. So that would most likely be an online course. We'll develop elementary, middle, and We'll develop elementary, middle, high school norms. And so the district can transition, transition fully back to a remote platform if necessary. Or hopefully to a, a traditional schooling session when we're all involved and everyone's back in school. Hopefully soon as possible. One more slide. So by August 3rd, we're going to have that, the survey with the intent will be collected, we'll know how many are planning to. Keep their students on a remote only option. And with that, we can then look at our cohort numbers and our cohort needs and our staffing needs. And kind of start driving the next level of the plan. Next, we also by the third, you'll be notified of your cohort for your child. By the seventh, you must commit to that remote. So the third, by the third, you're doing the survey and you have some time to think about it, but that's giving us plan, time to talk by the end of that week. We need to know the commitment selecting for that. And once again, you, you commit into remote, you're there until the end of the first marking period. However, if you enter into the hybrid and you have health concerns at home, we, we fully expect, expect that. Or there's other concerns or things just take a little turn and you're a little, become a little more worried. You can then with the staffing and we have in place, if we have the right staffing in place. You can at that time opt to go into the remote only a little later on if, if we can accommodate it. But once you opt in, you have to stay there for the, the entire first marking period. Elementary, middle, high school teams will continue to work on established norms and expectations. August 21st, transportation routes must be done, so we'll have to know who is coming into school. Who will be driving their own students will have information provided to you for an opt-out letter for transportation. If you feel it's safer for you to drive your child to school, perfectly understandable. But we have to know that because it's going to determine how many students we can fit on the bus. With a maximum number of 11 on a, on a full route, a full 54 passenger bus according to CDC guidelines. We'll have our professional development, not only for staff, but for parents as well. So you are up to date on everything you need to know on our, our learning platforms. And using our team's platform as well. By the fourth, we'll have all this devices ready for distribution and any of the P P E that we're providing for staff and family. Something that's important to note, I just want to. I don't want to cough at the end like I did last time. With the devices, we were able to get the CARES money and put into a grant. So we would have one-to-one devices for all families. And because of our response, our timely response to a survey that was done by the Department of Education. We also benefited from the digital divide grant that just came out. So we will hopefully be able to provide everyone's device and every family. With a Wi-Fi connection as well, so that divide, a digital divide will not be an issue for families. Working at home and having, worry about having multiple devices in the house and the, the bandwidth to support that. We're, we're also during the, the course of this next month, really working on our programs for our diverse learning. I think Dr. Chewy said it well, when we talked about our E L L, our special needs population, how to best serve them. And the availability, the increased availability, we'll have them to be in-person education based upon the, the numbers we'll have. The confirmed numbers we'll have based upon our survey. So I'm not sure if there's another slide. I'm, I'm guessing.
That is the last slide, I'm going to stop the share so that Ms. Ellis Foster can take over again.
I just want to summarize, so thank you to our, our, our public and to our, our board for listening to us. Like I said earlier, this is not a, an advantageous time for any of us to really have to make these decisions. This, this township, this district, this board has known and has always worked on, on the side of caution. And safety when protecting our students and protecting our staff, and I think that is advantageous. And that's what this plan represents, not from my mouth, but in my design, but from the design of the task force. That put this together. As I stated, we are crossing a bridge that has not been crossed before. I think it's best to put our least amount of students and staff at risk. As we take our first step to cross that bridge, instead of putting half out there. And, and taking a risk that we can't go back from. You know, like we, I said earlier, if we find that we can absorb. That population and more, we can easily adjust and let this model grow. I would just be concerned about bringing in more students than we can handle. And having health concerns later on that we can't back away from. I want to thank everyone for their time and consideration in this. And I now turn it over to Ms. Ellis Foster. There's just, um. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Sedino. Just want to put this back up, all right, so then our next move is to go into our public comments. Just want to make a, a few comments before we open it up. Because this is the only topic that we have today. And I'm sure there's a, a lot of questions, a lot of comments. We are just going to have the one public comment period. So if you have a comment on this or on any other school board item. Please use this opportunity right now to, to make your comment. I think, again, maybe the easiest way to do this, I'm trying to figure out the, the most orderly way we can do this. I see there were some questions coming through chat. If you have a question you just want to ask, you can put it in chat and we'll try to answer them as quickly as we can. As well as if you would like to speak. If you can, I, I think I've seen some people already, if you can raise your hand. And we can, I can unmute you. So I think if we can first start with a few of the questions. And then after that, I will, we'll move into people on the phone. So if we can kind of go through that order, just so we have some, some order. So I don't know, Mr. Sedino, I know you, you tried to answer some of the questions, the chat is not available to the public. So there were a few questions, I wonder if we can just start with that and then.
I'm just going to say that I have to, I, I don't know what happened, I mean, you stopped, I, I can only see the Zoom homepage right now. So I don't know if I got kicked off, I only have audio, I don't have video right now. So I, I might have to step off and come right back on to reload this, but it just progressed without me and I'll be right back.
Okay. So maybe, uh, let me start by some of the questions that people had. And some of them might have been answered, but maybe we can just dig a little deeper. There was the question, can you please let me know if the district will be sanitizing desks between classes? As the students move into the next class? And I believe that is a yes answer, so you know, that will be happening. I also believe, and again, please, anybody else chime in, that as much as possible, and this is more so in elementary. We will have teachers move, not the students.
And Ms. Ellis Foster, I can just add to that because of the classes being smaller in size. We can designate specific desks for students, so even in cases where they have to switch classes at the middle or high school. Designating that during period one, you sit in one desk and period, they can be cleaned and then have time for the, the cleaner to set in. And then period two sits in a different desk and then cleans and you can rotate back and forth. The same with the buses, we can space students accordingly where they're sitting on different seats between each level. Pickup. And in the cases where we are able to move teachers, for example, related arts at the elementary. We can have the related arts teacher come into the classroom instead of the students moving out throughout the building and moving into another class.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that, I, I know we've seen a lot of questions on the, the other day on the, the email address that we had up. We've taken and compiled a lot of those questions that were frequently asked and placed them on the website. So if you go to the website, you'll see a majority of the questions that were asked and, and, and answers there.
And that's available right now, correct?
Yes, correct, right now.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we will add to that as we are able to do so.
Okay. Okay, so then the next question, is this a live available or available via email? Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll, will we be sending this deck out or this information out that we were sharing today that, on the schedule?
This presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we, we'll, we'll share it to the public, yes.
Okay, great. And as the teacher, can we, can you maybe talk, because I see several questions about how this live is going to work? So the teacher available on, on Tuesdays and Thursdays live, where a student can sign in and talk face to face with them. Can you just clarify, it's not just email that there is going to be that?
It doesn't look much different than we're doing now, pretend I'm your teacher. And you're my, you're in my class, using the team's platform because it is protected. We, I would be meeting with my cohort, I could assign the eight, the eight students assigned to that cohort. I could have a morning meeting with everyone here and go over the day, check in with my students, see how they're doing. And say, okay, so the next cohort would meet, be meeting at this time, or I could do it with leveled reading. I could say, okay, this reading group, I'm going to meet with you from 9:30 until on, on 9:50. Whatever, however that schedule allows, but it has a teacher availability, but it will be live instruction like this done remotely.
And then, you know, can a, a parent choose option one and opt out of in-person? So yes, they can have full remote.
Yes.
And the next question with full remote, they will have live instructions. Similar to the A, B, C hybrid.
It'll look like mostly, mostly based upon the numbers we have, it mostly look like the Tuesday, Thursday schedule.
And again, I think that's the, the 100% remote is not built out yet. Because we don't know whether it's going to, what it's going to look like based on the population. So there is a question about that, that it doesn't seem like there's a clear breakdown of the day, similar to the in-school days. Which is correct, because I think we're not clear whether they're going to be their own cohort or co-mingled. But either way, when they're remote, they will have some live instructions, correct?
Definitely, and not, and definitely not less than any other, other cohorts. But most likely more, because they're not getting the in-person instruction in the school.
I believe this one was answered, but if you can just clarify both ways, that it's, you start out doing remote, can you switch to hybrid or vice versa?
That would have to, if you do that, that would have to be done the marking period. Because then you'd be impacting the number of students coming in to the hybrid model. And it may exceed our six-foot distance within, within the classroom, so.
Can you, can you clarify though, if somebody starts the hybrid at any time, can they go remote? Or do they have to wait to the end of the marking period?
If you're, if you start with the hybrid, you can go to remote, it's easier to do that way because we're not looking at CDC guidelines going the other way. But it's harder, once we establish a classroom and we establish a cohort that has eight students in it, teacher, maybe a paraprofessional. Now we've, we've maxed out that classroom according to the CDC guideline. If you decide that you want to come back in, I may not, we may not be able to absorb your, your child. Safely into that, that size of that classroom without exceeding it.
Okay, good, thank you. And I, again, I think many of these will be on the F A Qs also. Why is Obridge not live streaming like neighborhood districts?
We had that discussion the, the other day, so, I mean, even this today with our. Remote learning team. So there's a few facets to it. One, live streaming. The ability to live stream and protecting students' privacy rights is main important. So the camera would have to only be focused on the teacher at the board. Now the, all the teachers here, and they know that the best instruction doesn't take place with that anymore. Where I'm talking to my students from the front of the classroom for 40, 40 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever it is. It's more me leading the instruction and then going with my students and checking with them. So this is what that would look like in many instances, it'd be the teacher talking, just like you are now. Leading the students through an example of what she wants them or he wants them to do. And then going and checking on the student. I'd be working individually with students at their desks. Making sure they get the instruction that they're afforded. Because they're there for their in-person instruction, those eight to nine students. So I'm walking around, I'm talking to them, I'm seeing what their problems are. But is that student at home engaging now because they just lost their teacher? They're looking at a, a blank board or an empty chair. So that's one model in which we think we can do better. And in fact, I know we could do better. Secondly, there is a perk decision that was held up, the Pelle Grant, on the ability to put cameras inside a classroom. This is something that would have to be negotiated. And both us at the administration and the O B A feels that our teachers can do a better job. Than having a, a camera fixed upon a set place in the classroom. No one's done it yet successfully, there's people talking about, our districts talking about going to do it. But whether it's been done successfully in this, in the districts that I have heard about, there's been very negative reviews to it.
Can my child attend in-school day every day instead of remote learning?
No. And again, this comes down to, you know, if someone says that that's what they would like to do. And I'd say, I'd love that too, I want us to get back to that place and I know all of our teachers want us to get back there too. But if you're looking at the guidelines and the guidance sent to us by the Department of Education, State of New Jersey. We have to use the CDC guidelines for safety and health. There's no way within our schools or classrooms that range anywhere from 500 plus to 600 plus square feet. That we can bring all of them back. And maintain that, that, those CDC guidelines.
Will noon hour supervisors be employed during the school year?
That is something we'd have to look at, if we look at other possible tasks for them, but obviously. You know, there's no in, in-building dining going on. We're not using the, the cafeterias for dining at this time. So we would have to look for alternative tasks for them. Because if we're not using, using the cafeteria during this time, we wouldn't be there. You know, hopefully, like I said, this plan we're being rolling out, hopefully is temporary, you know, getting us to the fall. To January, I'm not sure, but at some point, we will be going back to some semblance of normalcy.
I'm going to do an edit to this next one because it says, are all in second grade desks, will they be six feet apart? I would almost say with any grade, any class, will the desk be six feet apart?
We've been in the classrooms from high school to middle, middle school, elementary school, with our tape measures and our tape and marked off what six feet looks like.
The next one, I apologize, my head is spinning. I can say you're not alone, I think many of our heads are spinning. The question is, if I choose 100% remote option, will my child have virtual lessons in the afternoon on A, B, and C days? Or only on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
If you're in the 100% remote option, again, we're still building that out and it's going to bend on two things. If there's not enough 100% remote. Committed families, then those students would be built into a cohort that already exists. However, if we have an overabundance of 100% remotes that we can't serve through that, for that measure. We would have to take staff and assign them to the 100% remote. But it wouldn't be that, you know, you are just with shepherd students on a 100% remote. You could be in the first grade with 100% remote students from across the district with that, that teacher. Those are still part of what we have to build out depending on the information we receive back from those committing to the 100% remote. Some of the other things I've seen where districts are looking at, okay, so if they do it in A, B model. And talking to my someone, my super tenants. And what would probably have to happen here, if we went to just an A, B instead of an A, B, C cohort. They would have enough students possibly in the third grade. To keep everyone socially distanced on A days and B, B days. But maybe the fourth grade, there's too many students in the fourth grade and this would happen definitely in some of our areas. So they might have to take some of the fourth grade students and put them in a third grade class and have a mixed class of third grade and fourth grade. Socially distanced so they can differentiate there. That's some of the drawbacks of doing an A day and B day, because you're trying to bring in your students into two cohorts. But keeping with those CDC guidelines, you may have to cross-grade blocks of students. So there could be third graders, fourth graders in one class in the in-person education that's going on.
Okay, I appreciate all the stakeholders, we're involved in planning for the new school year, I support this plan. It does solve all of my concerns, it does not, but I know it will solve some for everyone. This is quite a feat in and of itself, well done, Obridge, you are a model. Well done, Obridge, you are a model for the state. I do have one question. Teachers will be remote teaching from home Tuesdays and Thursdays, is that correct?
That is correct, because the, the, one of the reasons for the, the remote learning on Tuesdays and Thursdays is to be overly, you know, I can't emphasize enough. We're having children in those desks. We want to make sure that the cohort A does not cross-contaminate with cohort B. So we want to clean, clean the classrooms, clean the school, wipe down all doorknobs, everything else, bathrooms. And actually, you know, part of the thing, the best decontaminator is actually letting the building sit a little bit too. You know, on soft products such as books and so forth, papers that a student might touch, the twenty-four hour rule is most, is most effective. So that's why it's happening. If you're using an A B model, and in a class, there is an outbreak, you've lost all of cohort A. If you have A, B, C, you know, you're keeping the students as distant as possible, and you're losing a third of your students in the cohort instead of, instead of half.
Will breakfast and a snack be eaten in class? If so, masks will come off, and you know, does that, that does not sound safe.
We're looking at that and how we do. We were talking with, this morning with the business administrator and, and our food service provider, the federal government states you have to offer breakfast to those who are entitled to it. So whether, you know, we look at maybe outside dining on good days, using tents, picnic tables, whatever, something that we can provide. But I assure you, it will be done in a safe manner. It will not be students sitting together in a cafeteria table eating meals together.
The superintendent states that in-person may increase based on future, in the future, but what would dictate that? Would it be, would it be based on more families electing remote?
I think it, it could be based upon that, but I'm hoping it's based upon a overall flattening, or we continue to flatten, and we've seen some stability in our ability to keep COVID outbreaks out of our schools. I mean, that's why we're doing this. That's why we're doing this way, to keep outbreaks low and to impact least amount of students and staff as possible. So if we find with this, the thirty-three percent cohort, we can do that, and we learn from it on what our strengths are, then we can expand it.
Will kids who usually go to resource room for E L A and reading, will they get instruction in the gen, ed, gen ed classroom?
Those students would receive instruction with a resource certified special education teacher within the confines of the school day, and also be provided with those online activities from their resource teacher for those core subject areas.
What will elementary students be doing in the in-person days when it's not their day to be in school? Will they be getting any live instructions on that day? And I, I mean, I think this one was answered, but do you want to?
So as we talked about on the previous day, the teacher would be putting out those, those lessons, those video recorded lessons that we're doing now. I'm sure the teachers have their own flip grids, screencastify lessons that we're doing that, that's, those students will be checking in the morning. And then in the afternoon, that teacher can live check in with them on individual students, you know, checking in through teams, saying I'm having trouble with this, this, this lesson, I'm having trouble with this concept. The teacher in the afternoon can then check in with them one-to-one and provide them with the supports they need.
Okay, I just want to tell those people with your hands raised, don't worry, I didn't forget about you. We're gonna try to get through these questions and then we'll move to you, so don't, don't think we forgot you.
And also, we're looking at, so we're also looking at the roles of our, our guidance counselors, CSTs. So they could be more of a resource to those students who are home while their teacher's teaching and reach out to them, support them in their instruction while they're home on those, those days when they're not in person.
My son will be in special education kindergarten. Do you have any info on the, on that program?
Again, we're looking at all the programs in relation to what the board decides tonight. And we're looking at each of the programs, whether it's self-contained classroom, a resource pullout classroom, an I C R classroom, or a student who has an I P in a gen ed setting, and then making determinations based on the needs of the students if they were to attend the school day more than once during the course of the week.
Again, I think this one might have been answered, but well quickly, what if a student has a question? Will each teacher set a schedule of when a student can sign on and talk to that teacher live? And, and I believe that there is going to be a set schedule for everyone, right? So everyone is going to know the hours and such, correct?
Yes.
So there will be set time for everybody.
I just want to add that the students can interact with the teachers through teams as well.
I, I apologize, you might have mentioned this, Dr. Tui, but again, a little bit more is how will, and we don't know everything, but how will remote work with I E Ps?
Well, the student, again, it's going to depend on the respective grade level. But if a student has an accommodation or modification as outlined in their I P, and work was sent home to the student on either one of the days that they are not working in person, or there's some question on the, on the virtual days, then that work would be modified by the special education teacher prior to going home to ensure that the modifications and accommodations in the student's I P would be in effect with the work that they're provided.
For live streaming, can't the district just have the parents sign a waiver?
It's, it's not, no, it's not justice. You can only sign a waiver for your child, you can't sign a waiver for everyone else's child. And again, it's based on a perk decision that has been held up by the appellate court on putting cameras in the classroom. Now, other districts may be doing it, but you know, I equate that to doing seventy-five on Route eighteen, pass a trooper. If he chooses not to come after you, doesn't mean that there's not a law saying you can't do seventy-five, it just, he's tolerating that, you going over that law at the time.
Why, why can't we continue?
And we can have, again, if maybe Mr. Parton, at the end of this, can maybe address that, that question, because it seems to come up, and maybe his legalese would be even better for people.
Okay. Why can't we continue to do what we did at the end of the year in E S Y with Zoom and live face to face?
Well, I, I think that has been addressed. That is going to be part of the, the days where the students are on a full remote schedule. And then on the days that students are in person in one of the cohorts, obviously, the teacher is teaching in the classroom, so they wouldn't be able to provide the Zoom or the Microsoft Teams collection and individual meeting. So on those Tuesdays and Thursdays, the expectation for, for teachers and staff is that they will be available and scheduled with in-person activities with, excuse me, remote in-person activities with the students that they're in, in charge with.
Thank you. I think this is something that we're still working on, but, and will have available as we do it, but it's, I'd like more information on what will happen if the students are sent to the isolation tent and the screening process and who will be, be performing the screenings.
So from the, the district perspective, anyone who asks, obviously needs that kind of assistance, would have to have been screened already by the school nurse. And once we know that the student is just possibly symptomatic but stable, so a member of the school would be there with the student until the student is picked up. We then could contact the Department of Health and go through our standing orders from our doctor. And that may lead to the rest of that cohort within that class being contained and being told to go home and self-contain for the ten days, which is now the CDC guidelines, and the staff members as well. This is why it gets tricky about in-person instruction and doing this, and why I think the Department of Education is having second thoughts, because it's like a giant spider web. So depending on the level of contact and how much contact you have, because you are contagious for three days prior to becoming symptomatic, you're looking at your classmates and who their siblings are, and you've gone home with them. And now do we look at, you know, your siblings and what class they're in and with their school, and do they have to now self-quarantine as well? I said this the other day, you know, you know, if Major League Baseball with billions of dollars cannot protect themselves from an outbreak, I don't know how we can, because we do not have a luxury of a bubble to operate in. Students and families will take vacations, receive guests from different areas, go to different places of risky behavior for COVID and come to school. And there's no way to control that other than, again, doing questionnaires that we can do through real time before a student arrives at school and do temperature screenings, but you can still be contagious without a, a visible temperature when you come to school.
There's several questions, and, and it might be just that we cannot answer this yet about remote learning schedule. And, and one of the biggest concern is, how can somebody select remote learning if they don't know what the day looks like?
The day, like we've won.
You know, the week.
It's gonna look like either the cohort that is in school, but you're not, your child's not going to be there that one day of the week. I'm telling you, most likely, I believe it's going to be the Tuesday, Thursday cohort. That, that Tuesday, Thursday schedule, based upon the numbers that we're seeing. I believe that you will, your child will be following that Tuesday, Thursday remote schedule with a teacher assigned to you.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get anybody new who had a question.
When we post this, and if you didn't remember, didn't see, you go back to that schedule, look at the Tuesday, Thursday schedule, that would most likely resemble what the remote would look like.
What happens if my child is struggling with remote learning? How do we address that?
You work with your, your, your school teacher, your, your counselor, your administrator within the school, and we can see what other supports we can provide for, for your child.
Will we be providing in-school COVID testing?
We're not allowed at this point to provide in-school COVID testing. We have many opportunities. I don't, it doesn't seem like the public's really taking advantage of it. I've worked with the, the township, the police department, and we've, they have for us, but used our site to provide everyone for COVID testing from the township. We just had one on the twenty-ninth. I'm going to be doing, from the district point of view, I'm going to be doing more of them as we get closer to opening school, making it available to all staff, and then making it available to families as well. So this is a, a great opportunity. While I can't mandate you're tested before you come in, a great opportunity to, to be tested.
Going back to sanitizing the desk between classes, can tell me how the district will do all rooms during the three-minute time change?
We're, we're still working on a plan for that. It may, it may come down to the students cleaning their own space, their own desk surface in front of them. Or you, like we said before, we, we won't be utilizing all the desks in the classroom. So a student wipes down their desk in, in front of them, obviously younger students, we create more of a, more of a problem. We could have, again, other personnel doing that, and, but that is something, a challenge that we'll have to address. It becomes more difficult, again, with more students in the classroom. So if we have two cohorts, A and B, then those are more desks that we have to clean and wipe down.
What will happen with Glenn preschool, special needs children? What if happens if they don't wear masks?
Well, we are, you know, just to give the, the public just a knowledge of what we've been doing this summer. The Glenn, the Department of Special Needs has been doing our, our regular standard child study team assessments for initial and some reevaluations. And to, to my very, very pleasant surprise, students have really embraced wearing the masks. Now, it's not for a full four-hour period, but I can say with undue certainty, ninety-eight percent of the students coming into the building wore the mask the entire time when doing the assessment. And I have to give kudos to the parents of the community who are working with their students and making them wear a mask for part of the day, even if it's for fifteen minutes to build up that mask tolerance. But that's something that I've seen so far this year, just based on the students that have come in to, to class. We are, for those classes that are, we have more active students. For some of our students who are in, for some of the classes where the students might have a sensitivity issue, whether it's in potentially some of our B D, M D, or A B A classes. You know, we are going to provide the best, the, the best level of P P for the staff with the idea that the, the, the staff is going to be protected. We have ordered face shields, face masks, gloves, et cetera. So we are trying to make sure that there is an appropriate level of P for those very intensive classes. So we will take each class as it comes, and as of right now, I have been very pleasantly surprised with the compliance of mask wearing during the course of summer with our students. So kudos to the parents on that.
Okay. You know, I want to try to get as many of these as we can, because so that the board can make its decision tonight. So some of these are starting to get redundant, so I just want to try to make sure, things that we weren't, that haven't been talked about yet, we do get to ask. Some days, some days in December, I'm sorry, December, September are hot. How do we know, how do we wear masks with noise C?
I addressed that the other day, so on those days, and I, I fully expect them, and I, I'm fully prepared for them. You know, we're not going to have snow days in the future from what I see, because anytime it snows, it's going to be a remote learning day. So we're not going to lose days to that, but we may have heat days in the beginning of the year, in which it's too hot for anyone to be expected to wear a mask in suppressive, humid conditions. So that day would turn into a remote day, and we would adjust the schedule on a day that was supposed to be an in-person, a, a day that was supposed to be a remote day, and make that an in-person day for that cohort.
Can students who have a laptop still get one from the district?
Yes. If you, if you feel as though you have a laptop that, you know, you'd prefer our laptop or whatever, of course, you can. Every student will be a one-to-one district, and every student will be entitled to a laptop for their learning program.
I'm not sure if we can answer this all yet, because if the curriculum's not played out, but what is the role of the paraprofessionals?
That role has not changed. The hundred and forty-seven paraprofessionals in district are under the guidance of the classroom teacher. The classroom teacher is the point of contact for all communication when it comes to paraprofessionals. We are continuing to elaborate on the role of the paraprofessional within the classroom. I, again, I have to reference the high school last year, Ms. Fazio, Mr. Dr. Sasso, and the administrative staff up there really helped to expand the role of the paraprofessionals in the classroom, and we're, we're looking to build on that model. But overall, the paraprofessional will still be under the direction of the, the teacher, and they will be provided. The teacher will help guide that instruction, and they will participate when appropriate and when possible in the instructional components of the classroom.
How will, thank you. How will high school students meet their graduation requirements based on the schedule? And how will in-person activities be handled, project unify, peer, et cetera?
High school graduation requirements are not changing. The students will still receive their A periods. They will just be receiving their A periods a little differently than they have in the past. They will still be required to take their four level, four years of English, three years of math, three years of science, lab science, three years of social studies, and four years of physical education. It's just going to look a little differently. They will still be scheduled for their A period, so project unify, peer, et cetera, will still be in a student's schedule. Again, what that looks like on that given day is going to be a little different if they're in person, or if they're going to be in that virtual Tuesday, Thursday component, and the teachers would adapt to that as they would with math, science, social studies, and, and English.
Okay, I, I, you know, I'm gonna just switch to one of the phone calls, because I see there are several people, you know, coming in a couple of times. And again, I don't think we've gotten all of them, but we're gonna go back to them, because there's one person waiting on. So I'm gonna unmute Mrs. Muscatello. You can, you should be able to speak right now if you want to.
Hello, Ms. Ellis Foster.
Okay, we can hear you, hello.
Good evening. I first wanted to say that I miss everyone, I miss seeing all of your faces. I wanted to also say that God bless you all, because I fully support the re-entry plan that you have come up with, the re-entry task force, everyone that worked on it. I can't imagine what you guys have gone through. I would not want to be up there with you, Mr. Sittadino, Dr. Tui, Dr. Hoker. But it shows that you definitely put the staff and the students first, and as a parent in the district and as a staff member, I truly appreciate that. Obviously, no one's going to be pleased with any plan. Obviously, no one's going to be pleased with any plan that comes up with. I mean, we're in a pandemic and no one's pleased with that, so any plan for this is not going to make anyone happy. Especially a music teacher right now. We all want live, meaningful learning and interactive learning for our children as teachers and as parents. And many parents have expressed wanting the live platforms, the Zoom. And all of that, and I am a very vocal person about wanting live interaction for my children and for the students. After watching numerous live streaming events in the districts. Including the other one the other night where superintendent and many of our panel were trying to address the district about upcoming plans. We had numerous students and children in the chat on public streams. Streaming very disrespect disrespectful comments. And those are public chats, the same way we would do live streaming and live Zoom chats and live in team chats. So I just want to mention out there to the adults, to the parents for your help and your assistance. Because on the end of my end as a parent as well, and my end as a teacher. That's where, that's another privacy issue, where it gets a little sticky using the the live virtual even as a remote. We want to communicate with those and we want to do a live teaching with them. And if we have live interactive teaching with them on Zoom or Teams or Google Meet or whatever platform we use. They have to chat and learn respectful ways of responding to each other. That and understand that they're not using their cell phones and they're not using Instagram and they're not, you know. Responding the way they they were the other night on YouTube, which was extremely disrespectful. And some of them may have been adults, I don't know, but I felt that need to speak tonight in the fact that that is, I know that is important to you as parents. That to see more live. Teaching going on and that there were a lot of privacy issues of outsiders breaking in and Zoom has gotten that under control. But we have to understand there's a lot of insiders also, that we need to utilize it properly in an educational factor to make it. Worth it for us to use and get what we need to out of it and be able to use the tools that were given properly. So on that note, I felt the need to speak on that tonight. And again, I say I would never want to be on that side of the table. Being forced to come up with a plan that most likely will be overturned. By other forces anyway, but being told that you have to make a plan and you made the best one possible. Bringing, bringing the least amount in. Is the safest choice at this point, and I totally respect the hard work that you put into that and I appreciate that. And I mean no disrespect by what I'm saying out there, but I'm just trying, I see everybody's comments. And I know that people are upset with the plan. And I know that people want to see that live learning, that live learning, and I'm all about interacting face to face with the kids. And the students, it's it's who I am and it's what I want to be doing and I would rather be in person. And if I can't be in person, I would rather be live on Zoom or live on Teams. But I I want to see them interacting appropriately too. And in order to see that, I think that they all know how to use technology, they really do. And I think we just need to remind them that when we're using it in school. Or with someone related to school, how to use it properly, so that we can utilize it and feel safe as teachers using it. Thank you, and again, thank you to everyone that worked on this. And thank you to central administration for protecting staff and the students and everything that you've done to the board. Thank you, and I hope that this goes through because it is the safest plan at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Muscarella, we almost started the Oscar music, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to a few of the questions, we've got a few. Regarding special education, some of our children get A plus therapies a week, will they be able to receive more in person therapies? Zoom is not efficient.
The related service model right now is will be provided for the students when they are in the buildings. In conjunction with the Tuesday, Thursday remote components. We will try and do as much as possible when the students are there, obviously, that's the ideal scenario. It'll be more of a push in model because the students are not going to be coming out of the classroom. As much as they have in the past and in the in the pullout model that we utilized previously. But the, as of right now, the the, as much therapy that we can provide the students in person, we will do so. And again, addressing the IP to the greatest extent possible.
What is the plan to deal with students who have a COVID positive parent sibling at home or sibling at home or somebody, anyone at home?
We will use the directors, what we see from not only our standing medical orders from our in house doctor, but working. Just like I did in the fall, with, I mean, the spring with. The county health official, he would, who would give us guidance on the contact tracing and how far it has to go. I know there's a question, I'm trying to fit a few questions at one time. That we're going to. Work with our our staff, I know our nursing staff, many of them, our administrative staff is taking a course to Johns Hopkins on contact tracing to put us ahead of the. Curve on this, so. We'll be working towards that. I'm afraid to cough. But yeah, so that that's what we're doing. If if students have a family member they live with, have, who have COVID nineteen, we have to assume that they'd have to take the quarantine timeout. Get tested before coming back, but during that time, they would stay on remote only, not be able to come to school. If the COVID case that they have impacts their health to a point where they can't keep up with the remote learning. We could opt them to then go to the home instruction model, which allows for accommodations where they could work at their own pace. And they wouldn't get as much instruction as the remote, remote learning, but. And and we would continue with that with them until they come back and beyond, so that they would catch up and get the supports they need when they're healthy again.
And you know, I just want to say, because there's more questions about getting laptops, some more like procedural questions. All of these things will be available, any new policies, procedures will be available before the start of school. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I saw your head, I saw you nod your head, I was making sure that you.
Need from workbooks to from laptops. Again, willing that everything's going strong, going healthy, you'd get on your first day back to school. If we're fully remote prior to that, by the powers that be, then we would arrange for alternative ways to get them to you.
I I believe this question was asked on on Tuesday, but maybe in a slightly different way. Was talked about, but if a child has winter asthma and coughs sometimes but wears a mask and has a doctor's note supporting the asthma, will they be able to stay in school with their cohort?
You know, it's 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 interesting that that question because. Again, it's going to rely on what our doctor's orders will provide us with. But just because you're coughing, you could be asymptomatic, but your coughing, your is propelling the. The vi, the the virus further. So. That's the difficult thing to say, we don't want to assume that it's just a cough when it's just a cough, and I gave the example the other day of, you know. My son was doing finals and he had headaches and we assumed he had headaches because he was doing finals. And we chalked it up to that until we took him to the doctor and he had mono, which very much can often looks like being stressed out from taking finals. So, you know, that's the hard part when you assume something is related to a preexisting condition. That it could be something else and we've just assumed too much.
I think, and I, 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 some of these I think are redundant or ones about the policies that we just may not have yet because it's, anything we do is is aligned with CDC. There was one question, will high school students be able to make changes to their schedule if they want different electives?
I I believe our our high school staff will be able to work with students on that, obviously, there may be. Looking at a courses that don't run because of limited involvement, so there'd be opportunities for to adjust their schedule as there is each year.
You know, Sididino, if you want to take a look, I I'm thinking we addressed all of the chats, but maybe if you want to just take a quick peek, make sure I didn't miss any. If you. If anyone does want to speak, if you can raise your hand. We can do that, if you're on the phone, if you're calling in, if you select star nine. That will give me the opportunity to unmute you and you can also speak.
Ms. Ellis Foster, I just see one about. How will remote students get devices? We do plan, you know, to. Prepare devices and have materials available for the remote students. And have a distribution similar to the way parents were, came in and picked up student belongings that were left in the buildings.
Okay, I see somebody on the phone. I'm gonna unmute you, your, the last three numbers of your phone are one, eight, two. So when I unmute you, if you can just. Indicate your name and then you'll be able to talk.
Hi, just a question from Tuesday's forum, is the first day of school now postponed?
We're gonna have the the board adjust the calendar in September, in August at the the first board meeting. Yeah, so the first day of school would now be the September fourth instead of September third would have the three in-service days upfront. And election day would be a remote learning day.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for calling in.
Okay. I don't see any other raised hands. I just want to reiterate that we will get out the document. From today out, the one from Tuesday is already out there, the FAQs are out there, which I'm going to. Assume we will continue to build out as we get these answers in. If you recall, we do have the email app that you can. Our email, which is, Mr. Sididino, I just went blank on the email.
Oh, it's COVID reentry questions at obps.org.
So you can continue to send those in and from that, we will update the FAQs so that you will, you know, we'll continue to have those out there. As well as, I know we had said Tuesday, sometime towards the end of August. We will do another forum. To answer, again, by that time, we should have a lot more of the details out there.
And by next week, the cohort information will come out. So everybody will notified by August third, I think, of their cohort information.
I'll say August third or August fourth is the latest.
Okay.
Okay, and you know what, I'm just gonna ask this, that, you know, as people get things, if they have questions, their best. Person to contact would be a building supervisor, if if, as we're going through this, is there a best person, somebody should reach out to? If, for example, they have a question about their cohort or something like that, is it the building supervisor, the, you know, building principal, the best person to reach out to?
Yes.
Okay, and that's if any principals are on, so don't tell them if I kind of gave out their numbers, so. So seeing that at this time. All right, we'll ask one more quick question. If a student opts opts out to do remote only, can they still participate in sports?
Yes.
I would assume any activity.
Yes, that, you know, and that's a big if, if we were having sports at that time.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Oh, you know what, I do see somebody else. Oh, no, I didn't, they put their hand down, I think, okay. All right, so again, thank you, everyone, again, this will not be the last time we talk about this, the last time we will send you information. We'll, you know, keep it going, and as was said, we have no idea what will be the next from. From the the state that would change what we do. So I think flexibility is is the key right now, so with that, I'm going to end. The public comment portion of our, our. Meeting and we're moving on. To. To board actions, so I'm just going to stop sharing.
And we, while you're doing that, can, can we have? Mr. Parton, just address a few things.
Yes, please.
Mr. Parton, so as I'm work, as I've seeking guidance from the Department of Education and talking to other superintendents, some districts aren't. Going this route, some districts aren't having a vote of the board of the. Of their reentry plan. And when we spoke to the Department of Education, they said it's not a necessary item. Have you heard anything on that?
Yes, what you're saying is true. Obviously, you're a school district, you are a team of administration and board members and the board should be fully. In the loop and fully, ideally fully in support. But we have from a, an assistant commissioner who was asked by a. A group of county superintendents who are looking for answers just like districts are. And the fact is, Board of Education approval is not required. But a board vote and a meeting exactly like this is strongly recommended by the Department of Education. Ultimately, the reopening plan is implementation of education. And as we've talked about in a lot of different contexts over the years, that is an administrative decision. It doesn't mean the board vote isn't important, but the board vote is not a legal requirement. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and again, I honestly didn't know which way you were going to go on that. Because there has been so many questions that we cannot get answers to, I've alluded to it hundreds of times that, you know. I I speak to someone from the Department of Education every day. And as we're trying to to do this, and the answers are usually we'll get back to you and no one has gotten back to us. The other question is in the topic of live stream. And I don't want parents to get confused, but when you're taking a camera, putting it in a classroom and. Recording out audio and video of the content of that classroom, can you speak to that perk decision and its appellate result?
Yeah. That perk decision, which is an appellate division decision from two thousand eighteen, so it's it's pretty recent law. Is instructive, but it it's a pylon as well, because. As a matter of law under FERPA, under the New Jersey Student Privacy Regulations, under your collective bargaining agreement with the OBEA. Under your board policy on recording things. It is not a best practice, nor is it compliant with all of those regulations. To live stream everything going on in a classroom like it's an NFL game. Not that we have those anymore either, but to do that. Is to invade the privacy of staff and students. There are different types of privacy, certainly a teaching staff member is doing his or her job and is required to do that. There were some questions before about waivers. And you can waive for your own child, but that does not speak to the privacy of the other children in the room. When you do the equivalent of panning around a room with a camera. That affects a lot of people, a lot of families, a lot of minors and a lot of staff members. So what the Belleville appellate division case says is that you need to negotiate that because it is an exceptional. Departure from the normal privacy that we afford to our public employees and to your public school students.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have no more questions.
All right, thank you, so now I'm going to ask for a motion so that we can, because I'm sure I know board members have questions, so we can. Have some more discussion on this, so I would like a motion for under board business number one, if I can have a motion, please.
Careo motion?
Caro and and a second by Mrs. Calley? Did I get that right?
Yep.
All right, thank you, roll call, Mr. Merrill, please. Oh, no, 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 never mind, sorry, listen, I'm just sorry, sorry, I feel like we have an immediate, all right, so now I'm gonna. Open for discussion and so.
I have some questions.
Okay, we'll do Mr. De Prima and then Mrs. Lam, because I did see her hand up, so we'll go that way, okay.
Thank you. I don't know if this is for Mr. Sididino, Dr. Hoker, Dr. Tuie, can we change, if this goes through tonight? Can we make changes before the first marking period, like, let's say things miraculously change, we change in October first. To a sixty six percenter.
I, you know, like, like Mr. Parton has stated. It's an administrative directive on the functioning functionality of the schools. I could do that. I could do that, and it may be something that we, we do. Again, it just would have to do, be done with the right amount of planning and notifying the board and the public because people's schedules and student schedules, obviously, are very important, teacher schedules. So I'd wanna be able to do it with enough, I guess, foresight that everybody is well aware and that we're going to be making that change. So if we decide to do that, you know, ideally, we'd like to do it in a marking period because it's a clean break for grading and everything else. But if we saw that, you know, we were in a really safe place, we could, we could address that and then give people enough leeway to know that it's coming and plan accordingly.
Okay, what if it doesn't pass tonight? What happens? I know we have cutoff dates coming soon.
Mr. Parton, do you wanna address that?
Yeah. There would certainly be reason for further discussion, but the answer to your question, Mr. De Prima, is that this vote is an acknowledgement similar to when you acknowledge the third year of a multi-year contract. So the administration would have the right and the obligation to move forward. You might schedule another meeting for further discussions and to revisit some concerns, but the plan would need to continue into implementation under the administration's guidance.
Okay, thank you. Two more, please. What if a student has a question during a video lesson? Like, in class, they're gonna raise their hand and say, Mrs. Jones, I have a question. But if they're sitting at their dining room table and they have a question, what do they do?
There's the same. Dr. Tewey, I mean, it's gonna be a teams, working through teams, but I'll let them address it.
Yeah, there's, it's the same feature as raising your hand in a Zoom lesson. So Microsoft Teams, over the course of the past, you know, four, three or four months, has really adopted some of the positive features of some of the other platforms. And one of those is the hand raising feature, which is available on Teams. So similar in the classroom, if the student wasn't understanding how to divide fractions, they raise their hand, the teacher calls on them, and they proceed forward with the question.
But I thought the lessons were pre-recorded.
Oh, so you're talking about during the remote only portion of it. So if it's the pre-recorded portion of it, a lot of times, they have like, almost like a frequently asked question portion of it there. But again, they can, they can always communicate with their teacher through Teams, and when the teacher has availability to get back to the student, they get back to them.
So just like I did now, I made notes and I'm asking at the end of the session, and they would do the same thing.
Yes.
Make notes and ask when. Okay, one more question, I'm sorry.
Good.
I'm sorry?
I just wanna say, you know.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I'm, I'm saying that we're, we're also making other staff members available to that student. So like I was saying before, where as that teacher may be having live instruction with students in the classroom at that time, when the question's raised, it doesn't mean that we can't loop in a counselor, we can't loop, loop in a CST member, we can't loop in someone else who could also address an assist at that time.
And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, will all students from 1 through 12, I guess K through 12, be following a same schedule? How, how is a ninth grader gonna be in period one when a sixth grader is in their fourth period? I, I don't, I think I missed something there.
I, that's kinda why we broke it down by levels. Like, students are, high school students, we operating more like from the standpoint of an online university. You know, they're, they don't move in cohorts. So, you know, if we're all sitting here in this group, you may, you may have English with Mr. Giordano, but he's not with you when you're in your math class, because you're with Ms. Foster there. So students, the student schedule at the high school works much more independently. So it's, works more like an online university. Where it's a little bit of that, but they're on Teams in the middle school and easier to keep in a group or a cohort. At the elementary, we use the word cohort, because that's what they are. They, those students will learn together and move together throughout the course of that schedule.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Lent, I'm just hoping that's a background and you're not really someplace that nice, because I'd be really jealous, but please, escalate.
Okay, first and foremost, I appreciate all your hard work on this. Obviously, you put a lot of work and time and effort into this, and I value everyone's health concerns and I value the teachers and the children's safety. That's first and foremost. Um, I think that we did leave a large percentage, though, of the community out from this plan, and that is the working parent. I've gotten a lot of texts, phone calls, emails from people that are either single parents or both parents work full-time, that are now forced with the decision of what to do with their child during the day while they're supposed to be working. With unemployment, the additional federal funding running out, with family leave only lasting 12 weeks. If you have to stay home to care for a child, what are these parents supposed to do during the day with their children? It, it isn't feasible to assume that, okay, I'll just quit my job because now my child needs to stay home to learn, needs to do virtual learning several times a week where I have to physically be here with them and I have no one else. I myself was a single parent for a long time where I worked 40, 50, 60 hours a week. There would be no possible way I could be home with my child doing it and supporting my family. So I was just curious if those people were taken into consideration. And I understand that you're restricted by CDC guidelines and what the government says, but I think this is a large percentage of the population of our community, that their needs are not being addressed in this plan.
And I, I agree with you 100% there, and that's always a concern. I've always said, you know, in the, in the front of this, the reason why there's even a push right now to get schools open is the economy. It's to get children in school so parents can work. No one can say anything different. Because it creates the hypocrisy of why a movie theater is not open right now, but they want schools to be open. Because having movie theaters open doesn't impact anyone's economy, but those people work in the movie theater. You know, but they say keep them closed because you can't socially distance people in a movie theater somehow. But you can do it in a school. And I think the only reason that hypocrisy of a statement could exist because they want, we want to have the schools open to serve the needs of those parents so they can work and support themselves during these very troubling times. But the, the, the truth is, we're in a rock and a hard place. We're told to open schools, but do so in a way that only a certain amount of students can come back. You can only do that and have, unless, unless we're in a position as the Board of Education to double our teaching force and rent out buildings across the township, there's nothing else that, that we could, we could do. We would have to take our teaching force, probably double it or triple it, and then find places to put people, students, and keep six feet apart, but also bring in, you know, desks, chairs, and so forth. You know, we're not getting any support, you know, other than, you know, we did get CARES money, but that's directed to, you know, not personnel, that's directed to technology. The digital divide money, again, directed towards technology. There is no way in which to do that. And to be honest with you, I don't even know if we could find the personnel to absorb that anyway. I mean, right now, we're having trouble staffing what we're going to have here now. A, a very dear teacher from this district retired yesterday cheerfully in my office because she said, I, I'm at the point where I am at risk. And my husband, almost, I almost lost my husband in last month to COVID-19. I wanna work more, but I can't be there. And when this schedules comes out, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more of that. But because of where, the position that we're in, that we have to bring students back, but only bring back certain amounts of them, it, it creates that challenge.
Have you looked into using like the gym area or the library area just to help social distance those children that do need to come in more often?
So if, some people have said, well, and it was that question the other day, why not keep the high school students home? Because like university students that are all learning remotely now, because it's a serious pandemic that keeps the university students home. But university students at home, learning, doesn't impact the economy because they don't need child, they don't need to be taking care of his children. So we're keeping them at home to learn and still paying their tuition, but doing that with our high school students, we could do that, and that would make the high school available for space, and we could bring students to the high school. But if I take 24 kids in Shepherd School and I divide them into 12, two, two parts of 12, and Mrs. Lent is the teacher of the 24 kids, who's the teacher of the 12 that I just moved to the high school? It has to be a certified teacher in that area. I can't take a paraprofessional and put them there. I can't take an art teacher and put them there. I have to take an elementary certified teacher in that area to there. Then again, now we've just doubled the workforce.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that it, it's an easy plan or an easy fix. It's just I'm addressing the concerns of the people that have reached out to me, and they are valid concerns. You are stuck between a rock and a hard place. It is a pandemic. Everyone's health and safety is first and foremost. That's, you know, I'm not disputing that. It's just, you, you know, I don't know if that portion of the community really felt that they were addressed at all. And, you know, maybe part of your plan should be speaking with them, figuring out what is available to them, you know, try to work around it.
And, and you know me, Ms. Lent, I, I hold more public forums than, I don't think, any superintendent around, but I can't even hold public forums. You know, I have, you know, my YouTube videos and so forth, I've gone out and then tried to stay in touch. And, you know, even having a, a plan rolled out the other day, discussing it and having it on two TV channels and so forth. I mean, I, I, I don't know of other districts, very, very few districts have had the plan rolled out that way. You know, most of the teachers that I've spoken to or friends of mine that who live in other towns, they basically got a letter in the email telling them what the plan is. We've tried to be as transparent as possible and communicate where we're at and, you know, but I, I, I'm definitely sympathetic to, to that. You know, I, I know I met with people from the township in the Recreation Department, the before and after care, to see if they would have any, but, you know, they're in the same place as us too. You know, if they can't use our facilities, because we're at maximum here with the CDC guidelines, they'd have to find other places to take children in. And I'm not necessarily sure that they're in the position that they could do that during the course of the day to take other, other student, other students in. I know that, you know, other, like childcare facilities have reached out to us and wanna partner with, partner with us, and I'm, I'm fine with that if there's a list that are out there. But then, again, again, like you said, it comes to a cost, right? There's gonna be a cost to that. No, no childcare group is gonna do that for free. So again, I opened up that meeting the other day saying, there's no way that I'm gonna make people happy with any decision that we have to make because there is no happy ending in this pandemic until it's over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next.
Madam President.
Mr. Dunn.
So, you know, I just wanna first take this time to sincerely thank the administration and everyone who participated in putting this comprehensive plan together. It's very well thought out. It has a lot of components. It is a little confusing, and I think that it's asking a lot and not providing enough. I believe that children need to be in school. And I know other districts are trying to make a concerted effort to get kids into school with split schedules, half-days in, in the morning, half-days in the afternoon, trying to get kids into the classroom. And I do have a serious concern as well for a large portion of the Olbridge community who is being left out of this plan. And quite frankly, I've spoken to at least two dozen parents who have expressed to me that they're in dire straits. They can't stay home with their children, especially elementary. This is elementary, people and our children in middle school and also in the high school, they don't have this issue because the kids can take care of themselves, they can get online, they can do everything they need to do for the virtual learning, get themselves on a bus. But when it comes down to the 3,500 elementary school students, I guarantee you, most of those parents can't stay home with their kids. And they're put out and they're in a problem right now, trying to find a way that they fill their responsibility as a parent, but they also have a responsibility of putting food on the table and going to work. And I think, and I echo what Ms. Lent has said, that there is a good portion of our community who's been left out. And I had one parent cry to me that she has four kids in the district and that she needs to take off from work and she can't make ends meet. And it breaks my heart, and, and we have a, a obligation to try to do something for that contingent of our town. You know, our parents, our homeowners are paying a lot of money in taxes. And, and it's really hurting them out there. And, you know, we are leaving out, I would say, half of the elementary school parents with this plan. I don't know what the solution is, but I think that we have to give them some sort of consideration. And I know that now with this information that's come to light from, from Dave Sedano and Chris Parton, that the board really has no say, the public has been taken out of this process because we are the representatives of, of the public. So we are discussing something which we can't even voice the concerns of our public. So it's up to the administration, which they have their responsibility, and they're going to do what's in their heart and best for our community. But theoretically now, based upon this new revelation, and the community probably doesn't know this until now, that the board is meaningless right now, other than giving insight or giving some direction or possible suggestions. So, you know, this has become more of an issue for me tonight. But you know what? I'm not taking anything for granted. I know that the teams that were put in place, Dave, Kathy, Jim, the teachers, the parents, everyone worked very hard on this plan. But this plan does not address that one component that is mostly elementary school students. And I have, I hope that we can find some sort of relief for them. I don't know what that can be, but we just cannot dismiss them. And I'm hoping that, you know what, we can go back and look at something to see if there is anything we can do. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we offer something, like maybe we can ask teachers who wanna volunteer to staff our school. I, I don't know. But there is a large contingent of parents and students who are being left out of this plan. And you know what? They have the right. They have the right as well. And I hope that we can revisit, maybe try to tweak something to help them because there are a good portion of our population, and I think that we can find an avenue. With that said, you know, consistency is important for our kids. Uniformity, being regimented, you know, they need structure. And, and I see that we are trying our best based upon our situation. But, you know, I, I think we can get kids back into the school. I, I, I'm not saying that what we have put together here is wrong. I think it is right, but I think we can go a little bit further. And I like the fact that this can be built upon. I think that that was a nice component that was built in, and I like Dave's analogy, that it's like a bridge. You're trying to cross it, and if you can go a little further, you can. But we need to realize that there is a large component of the Olbridge community that is disenfranchised right now. And I'm hoping, and I'm gonna plead for us to try to find a way to help them and provide them relief. So with that said, again, I wanna sincerely thank everyone who participated. I wanna thank the staff, the parents, Dave, Kathy, Jim, every administrator who put the time, and you, Kelly, I know you were part of all the committees trying to figure out this whole plan. But there is a large component that's out there, and I think we need to try to give them some sort of relief. And I'm a little ticked that the state has taken this out of the people's hands and left it to, to the administration. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I just wanna, can I just comment to Mr. Dunn's comments? One, you know, I would never work without the collaboration of the board, and the board has been apprised of this process. Every week, we've sent you the PowerPoint presentations and summary of what's going on. The purpose of this meeting is part of that collaboration. And if they, if I was told prior to tonight that we didn't even have to have the meeting, I still would have the meeting because that's the way we've always worked collaborative together. And again, I'm getting no support or answers above me either in the way that when I ask questions, they say they're not sure. So Mr. Parton's response to me tonight that this does not require board action, it was the first time I've heard it from anyone. As far as your, if, your request about transportation, I'm part of, obviously, a superintendent's association, and we're part of a consortium with transportation. And that's why no districts are doing that. Because it's not fiscally possible to add an A B morning-afternoon schedule because you're increasing your. Because you're increasing your transportation responsibilities from six runs to twelve runs. A day and we're going to have trouble finding transportation for the six runs that we have now. In the condition, in the conditions that we're in. So it would, you know. Most likely, Mr. Merrick can speak to that more than, and I'm putting him on the spot, you know, at least double or more our, our transportation costs to do another run every day to, to do so. And I'm not sure that would bring any relief because still, parents would still be without childcare half of the day. And makes it, you know. Still difficult to go to work, even if you have a half day, a schedule. So again, we looked at that, we looked at as a county, we looked at as a consortium. And it wasn't something that was feasible without causing a financial burden further that would have to go on a referendum and back out to the taxpayers.
Appreciate the insight, Dave. Thank you.
Just real quick, Kathy, Dr. Hoker, do you have, because I can't, I don't have it in front of me. Do you have, when that survey went out to the parents? And you got the information back and you know, what was the breakdown of parents that said they wanted their kids to go back and they're, they wanted their kids to be remote? Because I, I, I know that you guys made this this plan up based off of those surveys that you got. Am I correct?
Well, can I just say something real fast? I want to address that because I'm, I mean, hearing it's being addressed on Facebook. The committee, which consisted of parents from the community. Was presented with multiple schedules. And the committee overwhelmingly adopted this one with the support of those parents on the team. So for anybody to be saying that parents didn't have a say in it on the committee is irresponsible. There was multiple schedules put together. And all of the pros and cons laid out of all of the schedules. And this is the one overwhelmingly supported by every one of the committee. Majority of the committee, I would say, eighty percent of the committee. But a hundred percent of the parents.
Yeah. No, I know that. Well, that's where I was, you know. The information at our, in our meeting this morning, I know. I was seeing numbers that were like half and half, you know, like, so if you can address that.
And, and I can, because some of the emails that came into had implied that we disregarded the results of the survey. The, there were fifty-nine percent of parents who indicated that they would opt for the hybrid or one hundred percent remote. And forty-one percent who indicated fully in person. And when the results were, when we went over them the other night, it was broken down into the three groups. And I think people interpreted that as lower numbers for the hybrid and fully remote, if you looked at them individually. But there were fifty-nine percent of people who indicated they, they would not come back full time. And full time, one hundred percent in person was not an option. So looking at the results and looking at the research and all of the options that we provided. This was the option that, you know, based on all of the information. That it was determined this was the best option to go with.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I was told by some parents that they would want to know if that, if enough people want to do the remote learning, if they could add a second or a third day of in-person face-to-face class time, would that be possible?
Most of this is, is very fluid. So yes, if we had, if we had such an influx, I think Edison just did their results today. I guess seventy-five percent of the parents in Edison chose for remote only. You know, there's other towns that are just going remote only. Even though the Department of Education at this time and this governor says that's still not feasible and possible. That all may change tomorrow. But if we had an influx of, such a vast influx of people choosing remote only. It may cause us to reexamine our cohorts.
So if people wanted, they could have more days of in-class. It's like the parents that are affected by working. They would be able to send their kids to school and everything would be relatively fine.
Well, it would be more, it would be possible to add more days of in-person education. Again, the purpose for the early dismissal day, I don't like when people say half-day because it's truly not a half-day. We don't have half-days in school. It's a difference in elementary school between one fifteen and three fifteen, which is two hours and not a half-day. The purpose of that is because you, you, you can't have the teachers teaching during the day. And the remote students be home without getting that instruction. So the, the teachers have to have their prep time, lunchtime to teach the students they have during the day. And still service the needs of the students that are at home. And that's the purpose of the early dismissal so they can. So those students just aren't working completely on their own at home on any given day. So we can't ask the teachers to work beyond their workday because then again, that's a contractual issue. We'd have to expand our, you know, we already have in our contract, how much we'd have to pay them additionally for any hours beyond the contractual workday. So that would be something we'd have to absorb. But within that, that schedule, it is to, to accommodate both parts of that day. The, the students that are home and the students that are in the classroom. And I'm not sure even at this point, Mr. Giordano, I've answered your question. I've answered some of the questions. So please, if I didn't, tell me, Dave, you did not answer my question and rephrase it to me.
Okay, no, that was good. And I have to agree with what Mr. Dunn said about how a lot of this is handled by the state. And the CDC, which a lot of things that they passed weren't even elected by the people. So I understand that some parents are, you know, they don't agree with it and they have a lot of trouble with this going forward. But it is the best possible solution.
And you do understand that, you know, when the guidance were, were given, they give us the guidance that we have to follow the CDC guidelines, whether we, everyone likes them or not, that's what, this is what you have. And when they say, should in a litigation world, and Mr. Parton could agree with me on or not agree with me, when the Department of Education says you should do something. The moment you don't do something and someone becomes gravely ill. You've just opened yourself to a liability case that you wish you had just absorbed the transportation cost because you're going to lose yourself in a litigation somewhere else.
Yes.
Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Giordano? That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Mrs. Kelly.
First, again, I know I'm reiterating what a lot of people have said, but I sincerely want to thank Mr. Sidino and Dr. Hoker, Dr. Tuwee. Anybody else that had, you know, anything in large part to do with this. I know that it's a very unenviable position to be in. And yeah, like Mr. Sidino said, between a rock and a hard place. And all of this may change tomorrow as soon as Governor Murphy goes live. I feel very strongly, first and foremost, I mean, education is very important, but, and, and I think it was Mr. O'Neill who said this. That it's not worth, you know, people's lives. So the safety of the students and the staff are a huge consideration in this. And I feel that under the circumstances that this is the best way to go. Even if our vote doesn't really, you know, push it through or, or, you know, vote it down. I do have a question though. Mr. Sidino, you said that you had a few daycare places reach out to you to try to partner with us. Is there a way, maybe, you know, I, I, I have a lot of empathy. I, I was a working parent and, and I am very thankful that my kids are not of that age, because I don't know what I would have done in this particular situation. But the people, the, the daycare centers or the aftercare centers that are reaching out to you, is there a way to maybe bring that information together? What's available? Because maybe some of these working parents, because they didn't need it, because they, you know. Their kids were always in school and they went, and they went to the township aftercare. Maybe they don't know what's out there for them. Is there a way to kind of compile that information and get it out to the parents or put it someplace on the website?
Yeah, we have a whole webpage called, you know, dedicated to the road back on our website now. And if you haven't signed up for our new website yet and to push notifications through the app, I suggest you do so. But we can put that as part of that in any of the daycare providers that are licensed and accepted by the state that wants to, you know, I usually don't allow for advertising. But, you know, put their names there because it could be a resource to parents. We sure, we certainly could do that.
Okay, I think, you know, like I said, that would help. There's probably parents out there who don't know what's available to them because up until this point in time. They haven't needed it. But again, I want to thank everybody that put this plan together. Again, it's
I don't want you, you keep on saying the, us, the administration, you know, make sure we thank the whole task force.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant when I said administration and anybody that had anything to do with putting, you know, with putting this together. I thank, I thank everybody. Working within the confines of what we've been given and the current executive orders and then the con, having a plan and constantly keeping up with the changes, I know was very, very difficult and, and we appreciate it. That's all. I'm done.
All right. We haven't heard yet from Mr., okay, Mrs. Burns.
Unmute. Okay, so I just wanted to, again, thank everyone on the task force. I was not prepared to like this plan, but I was very impressed with the thirty-three percent model. I think that it's safer for our students. I know that I am blessed to be a stay-at-home mom. So my first thought was would I rather have to watch my kid for two weeks because they're quarantined? Or be able to set up a routine that we can give them some stability? So I think that this plan does do that. I would ask though, that we create a task force to make sure that things remain stable and moving forward that parents are able to voice concerns and we can flush out any problems. Because you said that this is fluid. It'll go you know, as needed probably with the numbers of the state. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I, I'm fully committed to that. And you know, if any of the board members would like to be part of a task force that keeps on examining numbers and what comes out of the state as far as directives, you know. Then I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, I, I would open up to members of the public too. Just a task force, this reentry task force, we're not done working with them. There's so much that has to be done as far as the, the health and safety component portions of the, the first part was the scheduling of it. But, and we know we have to do health and safety wise. But yeah, just the protocols for it and getting that all down, I want to keep on working with that, you know. And, and I like when members of our public are, who are on the task force hear about it because they hear about it from the school nurse who brings the information from the doctors and it, it, it makes it more tangible. I think, you know, it's, it's when you're part of the decision-making and, you know, I think a lot of people, it was a real eye-opener for them yesterday, the other day when I talked about everything on that CDC list of things that according to them, we would have to quarantine adults and children for. I mean, that's the, that half of that list is accomplished in the first forty minutes, school starts within each school, this school. So it's going to be a, a different time and it's going to be difficult and challenging. So the more people we have with their backgrounds and support would, would make it a better process for everyone, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you to everyone who, you know, made this happen and I'm excited for the new year. I don't know about anybody else. I feel like I should be.
I, I like the way you talked about the, would I rather be, you know, quarantined with my child for two weeks? I think that's important. You know, my, my analogy has always been is, you know. What do we lose by being overly cautious? The most we can expect, let's say, you know, we said, okay, we're going to go to twice a week. So over the course of the month, if we don't, if we don't see a change, so what, what have we, what have each student lost, you know, four days? But what did you lose if you rushed back with too many kids? And we had a larger outbreak? And it's not like this is just a one and done. You don't get, one person gets it and it's over with. It becomes a spider web within your family and your community. That, who your contact traced with and who, who else gets it? So I, I think, you know, as being sympathetic as I am to every, every party there and the families, you know, just getting us to that first month of looking at this and seeing what our data tells us. Lose, I'd rather lose those four days of having two cohorts. Than lose a, a good amount of people to a, to a unwavering and unforgiving virus.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Burns. Now, the only question, Mr. Sikolowski. Do you have any comments, please?
You mispronounced my name. It's Silikowski. Yeah, I listened to the whole thing and I'm going to agree with Mr. Dunn a hundred percent. I received a lot of phone calls and emails from parents, especially the ones in the elementary school. They're between a rock and a hard spot. They don't know what to do. Okay? I think that we should table this, not table this, but look a little further, see what facilities are available in Olbridge that we can use possibly Lowe's on Route nine. I, I don't know. I don't know. This plan is very good. I, you know, commend these people for putting all this work in, but I think we should go a little further. My concern is the elementary kids. They have to be one-to-one with the teacher. It's my opinion. Mr. Dunn, you presented very well. Thank you. You took all the words out of my mouth.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any other?
I just want to add something, please.
Okay, Rich, Rich's face popped up first to me. So we're going to go Rich and then Sal.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quick, this question is to Dave. Now, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow with Governor Murphy and what he's going to enlighten us with. However, you know, I've heard through channels, I'm not going to say here that it's, it's going to be, you know, possibly different means, we may go back to the way it was, you know, during April, but who knows? If that does occur and everything does go virtual. What would be the plan if it goes all virtual? Again, would we have our teachers going to this classroom to do their virtual lessons? They would have all their resource materials. They would have our technology. They will have an appropriate background to do their, 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 their teaching virtually. I'm just, you know, throwing it out there because, you know, I've heard some things. I'm not sure if that's true or not. But do we have a plan in place if we have to go virtual? I know that they said that we weren't. They want, you know, one-to-one contact. They want kids in the classroom. But it's changing, you know, it changed last week that it's going to be given as an option. And it may change now where it's not going to be an option and it's going to be all virtual again. Would we go to a staff that would be in the buildings? Teaching virtually or would they do it from home? Have you given any consideration?
One, I, I thank you for the question. Two, you know, my priority would be that, that the teachers, as many teachers as available would be available to provide that remote instruction across all the content areas and specializations like in special needs. Where they do it from is kind of secondary. I, I think we'd get more of them back and into working remotely. From home than, you know, again, we've already received notes from doctors and several, because pre-existing health conditions that eliminates probably right sixty, sixty people from our staff right now. That would go away if they could work from home. For the maj, majority of them. So that decision hasn't been made yet. I know we have a plan in place for making sure everyone gets their remote instruction. But where they teach your ass is, you know, for me, you know, and I, I'm here every day because it's easier for me to work with you from here, just, you know. I mean, there's five kids running around your house and everywhere, everything else is just easier for me. I have my resources here. And again, we'd have to look at guidance from that on the, you know, what they want from the Department of Health, you know, because they they always tell you the best place to be during that is, is home. So I don't know. It's going to be a lot. It's going to be depend on, we see an elevation, you know, today there was a slight elevation in the numbers again across the county, across the state, not here in Olbridge. We, we're doing a great job here in Holbridge. So I, I think that's a lot. There's a lot of numbers rising up in the South Jersey right now. So again, I think that's going to drive a lot of it. And I, I, I think, you know, that'll be important as far as the timeframe of this and I, you know, I'm hearing what Mr. Silikowski said too is, you know. And I, you know, I'm hearing what um Mr. Silikowski said too is, you know, I I I'm told that I have to have, you know, the governor was very clear that I have to give this to the public by August fourth. My my county superintendent wants it three days before I give it to the public. You guys do the math. That's tomorrow. I basically have to give it to them. So they're not giving me time to work on this. And, you know, it wasn't like we sat around and just started on it last week. No, we just got new directions last week, you know. We we had a plan in place, we were working with it, and then we got less on, less than a week ago, they told us, oh, we want you to do this now. Add this to the plan. So, you know, I'm not complaining. I'm just telling you that, you know, we're in a tight timeframe. And I would never do this without the board's consent and support um and working collaboratively with you. But through the governor's directive, I have to have this out to the public by the fourth and I have to have it to the county superintendent by tomorrow.
Understood. Thank you, Dave.
Miss Ellis Foster.
Yeah, actually, Sal was next. Sal, and then we'll go to you, Joe.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, yeah, I I neglected to say thank you to everybody before. I I think that goes without saying. I I know how much was put into this. Dave, we could see it in your eyes that how this has affected everybody. I am a little disappointed that, in essence, our vote is really, doesn't really mean much, but
It means a lot to me. It means a lot to me.
Thank you. Um, I just want whoever's left in the public to hear this. You have my word that if this doesn't work, I will be the first one fighting for a different way and a better way. I came in tonight with pretty much a definite no, but with all the precautions and safeguards in place, um I I think that I've heard enough to convince me that we have to at least try it and see what happens. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Sal. Uh, Joe, Mr. Carl?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say I did come into this meeting with a lot of questions. And um through, uh, you know, after after um Tuesday's presentation, you know, it just created all these questions. And um after listening to the presentation tonight, it had, I'm jotting down some more questions, but then a lot of the questions that I had were answered in the chat. And um so, but, you know, um Ms. Lent and Mr. Dunn did, you know, and Mr. Giordano did bring up a good point. And and I do feel for the parents that are um that have to go back to work. They 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 need that. And but the but, you know, uh we are, again, we said tonight so many times, between a rock and a hard place because the problem is that we still need to follow the guidelines. And we we, these children have to be uh six feet apart. They have to be, you know, socially distanced. And as Mr. Sittadino had uh mentioned, we don't have the resources to send all the kids back to school five days a week. Um it's unfortunate. But we just don't have the resources. I mean, we have this, we have this little thing called, you know, COVID nineteen that doesn't doesn't care about anything. He just came over and he doesn't care this. And we, you know, we need to educate our children the best way we can. But also, as has mentioned, you know, their health and safety is really of prime importance. And this plan is fluid. Um, I hear time and time again that it it can change, evolve. If the numbers stay static, um, you know, we can see how things work with the with the one day a week. We can move it to the two days a week. If our numbers go down, yay, we can keep expanding. But I think this this plan gives us a first step to opening up completely again, God willing. Um and I I do feel for for the, you know, the working parents, the single moms. Um, I I I like to think, I I'd like to think that the government will do some sort of assistance for them, uh, you know. That's, you know, wishful thinking, I I guess, on my part. Because, you know, I know how things have been with unemployment. People have had so many, so many problems. But um I I truly believe that this hybrid uh model is the best that that can be done right now. And as Mr. Giordano said earlier, you know, if if a lot of people opt for the all-remote learning, like that that D cohort, that will enable more kids to go into the classroom, you know, because there'll be more, you know. We'll be, they'll they'll be able to have more days with the same amount of smaller, you know, the smaller amount of children. So these are all variables that are, you know, not in our control right now. And we have to see how things move forward, things have, things progress moving forward. So um I I'm I'm going to support this this model. And um we're gonna see, you know, we're gonna see how things go. And I I have every faith in uh the administration and the task force, uh the reentry task force and the remote learning uh committee that is every time something changes, they will adapt to that change. I I have the utmost faith in in this district. So, yeah, that's that's all I have to say. I I will be supporting this model. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Uh, any other last comments? Because I will, I I do have a few that I I want to add uh before we wrap up and go to a vote. Mr. Giordano?
Okay, yes. Um, real quickly, I just like to thank everyone that had to do with this, the administration, the task force. But um for the sake of the public and the record, I don't know how everyone else is gonna vote, but I'm just gonna make sure it's not a unanimous yes. But I do want to say that I support everything that's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to wrap up with a few things. I mean, I can tell you, these last couple of weeks have been extremely emotional for everyone. Listen, I've cried with people too, so, which may not be hard for some people to imagine. This is, you know, not the perfect solution, and I'm hoping it's not the final solution. As we said, we can build on this. It's a framework that we can go from. I do want to ask, though, Mr. Sittadino, is there a way we can do maybe a little bit more partnership? Uh not just put a list out, but maybe try to engage some of these uh childcare facilities that we can can help a little bit more. And I'm not sure if this is possible, but you can tell me now. Uh, I know our school counselors aren't in right now. But when there are available, the principals, these families who are really in need of assistance, is there any way they can maybe reach out to somebody that we can help with them, maybe to find a solution? So they don't feel like they're alone in this, so that we can, you know, again, i- it's certainly not normally in our scope to do. Uh but my concern is if a family is in crisis, then a child in crisis. So we have to go forward with this model, right? We we have to go forward with a model, and it's not gonna be a five-day model. So if there's some way that we can maybe feel and do something uh to assist a little bit more, and I, you know, I'm not sure if that's anything within our scope.
Yeah, I I mean, we we come across lots of social issues as a as a school district, and this year has not been a stranger to social issues. We've dealt with a lot and we try to put as many resources available to parents and so forth. So, yeah, you you know, we can go ob- obviously above and beyond just putting out a list. And um maybe even having a Zoom like this, inviting um childcare providers to a Zoom and then have parents who are interested in it come in, ask questions, almost like a a speed dating type thing. Hey, what do you offer? What's going on there? How can you help? You know, what do you know, send us your rates or something like that, something of of that nature. We can have some of our, um, we have partnerships, as you know, with the Y and Stress Care and so forth um that can offer support and counseling as well that we already pay for as a district. So those are are definitely things that we can do to e- expand the level of support and help we can we can give um at this time.
Okay, because I think that's it. I I, you know, I I don't think, as we said, we have to address this issue, but how how can we assist? So I think that's something that, you know, we can do, so we can help the best we can. Um, I I I made a note on another thing, I think a good point, Mrs. Burns brought up about a committee, uh, you know, an ongoing group. And what I would say, um sometime next month, the board is gonna work on our goals. And I think that's an ideal thing that we can um use. And so, Mrs. Burns, don't forget that, because I think maybe that's something we can incorporate into a goal of ours uh as a board. So we know that's something we want to work on, you know, to continue to find improvements and continue to to speak the voice of of the people and 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 try to to make sure we can make this the best plan we can and to make it best education as we continue on. Uh, so I think that'll be a a good fit for that for for when we do it. So uh, you know, I think there's been enough said, you know, I I could could keep going. But um I think we, hopefully, we will see this change. Uh, if if we're allowed to go back, we'll consider, continue to see this, continue to see it fleshed out more, so better understanding of what it really means, you know, what the day will look like, how we can, you know, definitely improve from the remote learning of the spring. That this is going to be much more engaging, more real-time with the teacher, much more structured uh than before, much more structured for the students, much more structured for the uh the teachers. Um, and the other thing that it wasn't noted, but um I think important is one of the things that there will be coming out of this is it's kind of like an online parent university, so we can help parents understand the technology. You know, I know last year, some uh some kids might not have told their their parents exactly what 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 they were doing. And so this way, we can educate other parents. So they like, no, I know you go to here to find it. And much more streamlined so that it it's not time spent finding it, but time learning it. Um, and again, it's a, it it's an extremely stressful time for everyone. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the public. Again, keep sending in those emails. Um and we'll continue to update uh the the FAQs and try to get the information out as best we can um as we have information. And again, I think you'll see more and more details coming out, uh, you know, as we can focus on that now with the framework. So with that, uh, I think we've gotten all the the calls. I will request that we take a roll call on uh the recovery plan framework. Mr. Merrill, please.
Burns?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Guardedly, yes.
Dunn?
No vote.
Did you say no vote? So an abstention?
Abstention, no vote. Principal?
Giordano?
Dan.
Lent?
Abstain.
Silikowski? Mr. Silikowski?
Abstain.
And Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
So one, two, three, four, we have five yeses and four abstentions. The resolution passes.
All right, uh, thank you, everyone. Um, you know, this is certainly not the end, not the end of this discussion. Again, you know, I did mention the board we're meeting, we'll, we have two meetings in August. We also have a goal-setting meeting. So I think we'll have more opportunities to continue to talk. Uh, but don't get excited. Uh, we have an executive session. So, uh, yeah, Mr. Parton, please.
You you need a very brief, very brief executive session for attorney-client privilege and personnel issues.
Uh, and we will not be coming back.
Correct. You will only be adjourned.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Lent, to a motion?
Who was that? Mr. Dunn, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so